Not the most fun thing.
Call to order, the city council work session for CDB's Grand Forks for Wednesday, August 12th, 2020 is now 5 o'clock. Would City Clerk please call roll?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Riepel.
Here.
Tim Johnson. Mark Demers.
As Attorney McCorum, number one, regional market capture results. We have Mark Schill in the line. Mr. Gordy is also on the line. If you want to introduce him, Mr. Gordy, or time of the deal?
Mr. President and Mayor and Members of the Council, let me make sure I have audio on.
You're good.
Thank you. The regional market capture is an activity that is spearheaded by the Chamber and includes the City of Grand Forks, East Grand Forks EDA, the Greater Grand Forks Economic Development Corporation, and the Visitors and Conventions Bureau to look at the reasons why, what's been happening in the retail market in the Grand Forks region, and to look at where things might be headed in the future and what are the kinds of things and strategies that might be able to be used locally to assist businesses on both sides of the river. And Mr. Schill is with Praxis and he's been working with the group, and he has done a lot of analysis, and he's here to give you a quick summary of that analysis tonight.
Thanks, Paul. Wondering if I can get the screen share perhaps, share some slides? So Mayor and Members of the Council, in talking with Paul, I know you have a very full agenda today, so we'll do the, I'll research this as quickly as I can, but of course, happy to hang around for any discussion and questions if that's helpful. Give me one minute, I'm gonna see if I can get this going up. I apologize, I was not aware you needed the screen share option. If you could get started, I'll see if I can get that pulled up for you. Okay. I'll just start walking through the material I've got. So as Paul mentioned, the project is really a partnership led by the Chamber. They're coordinating everything, certainly funded by the City of Grand Forks, the Regional CDB, the Grand Forks Region EDC, and then of course, the East Grand Forks EDA. Paul's been very closely involved in the entire process. And so, you know, where this really starts is this idea of retail, the decline that's happened here in our market the last two. And so what we've seen, and what's important to keep in mind is that certainly has happened. We've lost about 1,300 jobs in the market through the end of last year, through pre-COVID. But what's more important is if you back that up another four or five years, is there was a boom of retail that occurred in this market as well. And so, really what's happened was, starting in about 2010, and then moving up towards about a peak in late 2014, there was a significant retail jobs increase in the two county area, the metropolitan area. That slid back down in the last five or so years, but what's happened is we've essentially come back to roughly the same level of jobs. There we go. I believe you can share your screen now. Yep, thanks. Okay, so here's the chart I was just pointing out is, you know, we see this peak here in 20, late 2014, that's Christmas time 2014. And so the story is this, right, this decline that's happened the last five or so years, but the rest of the story, right, is this increase. So what we saw was more of a boom and then a bust. And so here we've got the latest data through June, post pandemic. So we can see a little bit of a bounce back here that looks pretty good. So it's about where it was last June. We're down about 100 jobs or so since then. Where it gets interesting is when you start to fold in the exchange rate, the Canadian exchange rate. So that hit a dollar basically right about this time. The last month it was a dollar or par, was right about here, and at about 90 cents here towards the end of the peak, and then it started to slide as we know. So it was at about early 2016, 71 cents. Now I think it's up to 75 or so cents, right? But we see that clear impact, right, of the impact of the Canadian customers here in our market. The other point here though is, this is not unique to our Grand Forks, East Grand Forks region. It's very similar trend here in Fargo. So everyone says, oh yeah, everyone's going to Fargo? Well, maybe some are, but that, again, we see a similar pattern in retail jobs. And so what's interesting is, you know, through the pandemic, you know, this five-year time period, here's what you're all thinking about, right? But again, it's about flat going back 10 years. And when you include the June jobs, this region is a little bit better off than, you know, the other metro areas around the area. And so I think some of that was, we weathered a little bit of a hit already. So the other takeaway here though, and it's important to keep in mind, is a lot of what's happened were external factors that are impacting our market. Canadian exchange rate, poor ag earnings for several years, university layoffs, you have the oil boom and decline. Of course, you have the national retail apocalypse, right? We weren't saving shockco in East Grand Forks. That was a corporate decline that's about the structure of the market. Another key thing is we're seeing still is a few small, a few large retailers are really dominating everyone else. They figured out the online thing, and they're doing it very well. So when you look at though, the structure of retail in the region, what we're doing here is comparing in this chart to the nation. This line here would be where if these bars touch this line, we'd have the same share of retail locally as the rest of the country. So of course, we see this peak, right, 30% above average in 2014, and it has slid down, but it's still above, but to a certain extent. So that's important to keep in mind. So as part of this project then, we took that same approach and said, well, let's look at it by industry. Where are we high, where are we low? Well, right up top here, you see sporting goods, hobbies, musical, music instruments, Cabela's, right, that really contributes to this, two and a half times average. Where we're low, amusement, museums, clothing, some of these attractions was a pretty key one. Very much average in hotels, very much average in food service and drinking places. That's at 98% and 104%. But then what I think, we unpacked and looked at the growth over these five years by sector two. And so you see across the board fairly similar, right, some decline across most of them. Amusement and gaming is up, healthcare stores are up. What I want to point out though is down here, this category of non-store retailers where there's a 500 job loss, we believe that's Amazon. Amazon had that facility on the Grand Forks side. They moved all their employees to independent contractors. A lot of them are still working for Amazon, but they're not technically employees. So it's important to note that a lot of what's driving this that curve we saw, job loss, is some of that shift in Amazon. So the other key important economic trend though that's occurring is, some or other economic development numbers look good. Here's manufacturing, right, up about 1,500 jobs. In the Grand Forks, the MSA, we're almost up to average now in manufacturing compared to the nation. When you look at Polk County though, it's very strong in manufacturing, 40% above average, right? And so what's happened is, we've seen growth in manufacturing, decline in retail, but that's helped push up wages. So comparatively to some of the other regional metropolitan areas, the average weekly earnings are looking pretty good. They're coming up. They're not as close, they're not high by any means, but they are growing. That's a good sign. Okay, so when we looked at this project, there's really three goals we had in mind. One is, we want to improve the quality of life for our current and our future residents. It's also about who we want to attract to these communities, especially on the public sector side. You know, we want to try to protect our commercial tax base here. It's important for public sector revenues, right, and it's important for business. And then we do want to attract more visitors. So those are the kind of the three guiding principles. And we found really five themes that really were interwoven through this whole thing. First one is this, we want to support everything we do with data. Second one is this idea of focusing on experiences, particularly in retail, you know, places like Cabela's, like Shields, that have really done well, are doing well on that side. We want to leverage the university, both the institution and its people. We want to focus on niche opportunities. You know, where are the areas, the targeted areas that we think we can grow? Then we want to communicate. So we came up with this action plan that has five real pillars to it. Data, supporting our small operators, looking at visitation, developing attractions, and then looking at our public policy and our economic development resources. So the key one, as we know, this is, the first part of this is all about the data. And the two real big themes here, one is this idea of geolocation. So we're looking at three categories. One is our local market, who lives here within our region, who visits us on a daytime basis, they don't stay overnight, and then our overnight visitors. And so we use some of this geolocation GPS information to figure out, okay, where are these people, where are they, who are they, where are they coming from? So for instance, we found that 75% of our overnight tourists live within 300 miles of our metropolitan area. So we use that geolocation stuff to really key in on who these folks are. And we, using this idea of, it's called customer segmentation, where we're breaking down the market or our customers into what's kind of interesting, 71 different categories. And I won't go through these today, but we're looking at and saying, where are we high, where are we low, in terms of visitors and all these categories, in terms of the people that live here. And it gives us a sense of what can we sell to these groups, right? And so we look at it, you know, for East Grand Forks, for instance, here's the 71 categories, and some of the data, we can see where we're high, right, where we might be low, but where the competitive advantages are. And one of the key things we found, here, this one is for regional visitors, the overnight, the non-overnight folks. When we look at the overnight visitors, you see these charts are very different, right? Much more affluent, different, older folks visiting overnight versus those that come in for day trips. So that's one of the key takeaways here is, these are different, there's niches across the board, but they're different, the different types of visitors are actually distinct groups. So then what we did is say, we built some of these data tools to go in and say, oh yeah, what's this one? We're high. It's called True Grid Americans. You know, we can look through here and see all their propensities, their age, their income, those sorts of things. And so, well, you gone through, and once we really dove into this, we said, you know what, writing a big report here is not going to be helpful. What we need to do is tools. And so these data tools, there's about 10 or so of them, are available right now on the Chamber's website. If you click on this button, you can get access to that. And they're publicly available now, they're available to businesses to really drill deeply into all these segments and all this data on our local folks and our visitors. And so the other piece of what we tried to do is say, look, what are the niches? One of the real interesting ones was this idea of younger, active, more affluent families. They're really popping in this area, and that could be a good opportunity. And then a few other ones as well. One of the other key things we did is throughout the pandemic is got access to some new data sets, and you may have seen some Herald coverage on this, but we're able to identify where people, when people are starting to come back to business, and by what types of business. This piece here, we looked at these spikes on events, and how events and attractions are really driving our people visiting hotels, malls, sporting goods, restaurants and dining places. You see these spikes on the weekends, right? So that gave us some insight into the importance of particularly of the large events. Okay, so the rest of the other pillars here on this action plan, this second one is about supporting local operators, right? We want to assist them, we want to keep doing some of these assistance programs that we're doing. We're doing some targeted on-demand research. So if you've got a business that has a question, we'll, happy to write up a two-page piece that says, look, here, yes, there might be a market for this, or no, there might not be. So we're doing some customized things that way, and that's a new thing we're offering. There's some businesses getting together, working together, we want to support that. Then we want to try to innovate while we can. Pop-up shops, help do some online fulfillment, and there's a number of ideas there. The third piece is focusing on visitation and experience promotion. We want to continue, again, this market intelligence is useful. Do we want to look at a country concert? Do we want to look at a rock concert, things like that? We want to continue to support events with our investments as we can. Of course, that's changed during COVID a little bit, so that one's maybe parked a little bit. And then, you know, one of the things we're doing too, and this is more important in COVID, is say, look, we've got all this great information that we're using, particularly with the Convention Visitors Bureau about events and activities, let's target our local residents with that same information. So there's some efforts that are happening right now about that. Looking at attractions and amenities, we want, again, that research showed us, people coming to the community is helping drive business to restaurants, to our retailers, and sales tax. And so let's focus on that, let's find some community, local people, let's local ideas, and try to support that. And so we're looking at a group and some metrics to do that right now. And then the last piece is looking at public policy, positioning our governments as a navigator, as a facilitator, as a connection maker. And then, again, assessing our store for improvement programs, and startup funding, all of these things that can continue to help those folks that are opening companies. And then the last piece, in this, we'll adapt this as we go considering the pandemic, but do some targeted invitations to, we don't think there's going to be a lot of recruitment from big chains, of course, but maybe there's some regional operators that, especially once the dust starts to settle in retail and restaurants, and the new, the new doors open, and the next round of whatever that opportunity is, and people start coming out again. They start up, you know, invite some folks that may be in the region or in the Twin Cities that may want to open a branch up here. Okay, so, real quickly, retail's under fire, we know that. A lot of that's due to external impacts, and a lot of that's about this boom and the bust, right? It's not just about the bust. And we still have a pretty good-sized retail sector here compared to average. It's important to keep in mind. Wages are coming up, we're looking at these three goals, tax base, quality of life, and attraction. And then, there's no silver bullets here, there's many, many small takeaways. And so what we did here was build these tools, and we're looking to deploy them. We know that there's niches, and we know that we've done some work here to identify what those niches are, particularly young singles and this one about young, active families. So that's really a real quick summary. We've got this five-step here, this action platform that we're working now to deploy. You know, we're doing, continuing right now with some outreach with some service providers, working with Paul, for instance, to get connected with the local SBDC folks that are working in businesses every day. We've got the public access data tools that are now online on the Chamber's website. We're doing this targeted research on demand for folks, so contact Barry at the Chamber if you're interested in that, or if you know someone that could be helped. And then we're going to continue working on this idea of differentiators, these working groups that we have, it's community members, and empowering them to help with some of this work. And then finally, looking at this idea of targeting outside operators. So that is the quick summary. Happy to take any questions if needed or helpful. But I would say, you know, certainly, we've been working real closely with Paul throughout this whole process, and he's been key to this, and along with Daniel Black from the EDA Board. So he's been real helpful as well. And so anything that comes up, and what we're really trying to do is say, look, we don't know what the future will lie, so let's create some tools, let's create a flexible system to help those people that do have the ideas. And so let us know if there's what we can do to help moving forward.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Gordy, do you have anything to add at this time, or does anybody else have any questions after you make some comments, if you wish?
I think Mark expressed what's going on. Daniel and I are on several of the committees that are going through and doing more in-depth work that's following up on this, and we will be continuing to do that. For example, there are meetings a couple days next week, and there's a meeting the following week already set up on how to distribute some of the information. And Mayor, in particular for you, for our meeting tomorrow, we'll be able to take some of this information and share it tomorrow.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions at this time? I see none. I appreciate the presentation. I know we'll hear more ongoing and we'll move on from there. So, appreciate it.
Good. Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks. Move on to number two, discussion regarding CARES Act funding. Carla and Mr. Gordy and Mr. Murphy.
Carla and I have been working together on this, and are kind of going to tag team a little bit on this as we go. The CARES Act provided funding to state and local governments. They also provided funding to schools in separate categories. The city's share of the funding that was funded to us through the state is about $668,000. The funds are to be used for COVID-related expenses, and there's a time limit for the expenditure of that funding. Funds can also be shared across jurisdictions to provide the greatest impact. For example, we are already talking with Polk County and with Foston, with another meeting scheduled for the end of this week, talk about how we can maximize the impact, where some of the county funds will be used to augment city dollars, and can be used possibly for other things that would benefit the cities within the county, as well as the rural areas, the unincorporated areas. So far, city expenditures are roughly $250,000, and after the payment of the city expenses, the dollars can be used, in particular, was said to assist individuals and businesses harmed by the COVID response. If any dollars are available, the EDA has talked about it, we have suggested on the EDA basis is money is be used, be made available, if there's money available, to reimburse businesses for expenses for COVID, the response, the reimbursement would be proportionate with the available dollars available, divided by the dollars of expenses to determine a percentage to be applied to all the businesses seeking reimbursement. Be a reimbursement-based system, so that we would know how many dollars we have and how many dollars we can share, and they would have to provide receipts to show what they have. There may be other uses that the City Council wishes to use some of these dollars for that are COVID-related. Carla, do you want to talk about the schools? You're muted.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Paul. I have spoken with the East Grand Forks Public Schools. At this time, their estimated costs are about $599,000. They expect to get approximately $223,000, but they have to share that with the private schools. They talked about possibly 20% with the private schools. I also talked to Sacred Heart. At this time, they've spent about $12,000. They did say they'd have to get some Chromebooks that the public schools are ordering, and that would come out of the dollar amount from the public schools. And then I did call Riverside Christian School, but did not get a call back. So at this time, we're, like Paul said, we're just kind of putting everything together to see what the need is, and we're working with Polk County to see how much money they might have left over before we disperse it to our individual businesses. Paul did do a survey. Maybe we want to talk about that survey you sent out, Paul?
During the survey, I asked for expenses, and one of the other things that's eligible that would be very difficult to ascertain is lost revenues. For expenses, the expenses done by the different businesses so far range from zero to about $41,000, and the revenue losses go up to about $200,000. But in looking at it and thinking about it, my feeling is, we'd be better off doing receipts and based upon receipts, because that's something that we can see, it's very tangible.
Forgive me, Mr. Gordy, I have a question here, Mr. Mark. Is it my understanding with the businesses that this cannot replace any lost income? It has to do with the cost of, like say, product to disinfect, or Plexiglas, or if they had to buy additional tables to spread people out if they're outside, it does not go into lost income or wages? Is that correct?
No, sir. Actually, the latest that came from the state that we got, that they do in the Thursday briefings, is that it can also be used for lost income if there's money available. But as I said, in looking at it, I think that would be very difficult to ascertain the amounts of lost income, and that's why, from the EDA perspective, we're suggesting to you that we should do receipts on tangible actions.
Well, I think-
I think what Paul's, oh, excuse me, go ahead, Mark.
Go ahead, Carla.
I think what Paul is saying is that we're trying to find out what people have already spent to mitigate it, and that, see what's left, and then making go another step. And maybe possibly, if money is available, help with those lost revenues, help with people paying their rent. I know some of the other cities have done that. Help with some of them paying those even debt payments. There are things we can do like that. We're just feeling that, to be fair to everybody and to the citizens, that the easiest thing at this point in time is to reimburse for those costs that they actually have, and then see where we're at, and then go another step further.
And I agree with that. One of the other things can be used for is individuals who were harmed as well. If they were put out of work and had large bills or something, like water bills or rent payments, those can also, that can also be done. But before we get to that, we need to see where we are.
I think what we need to do is, we really need to make sure that we as a city are looking at it going, okay, do we really know what we're gonna, are we gonna have more costs up to this November 15th deadline? Are we gonna be having to pay some things and go, okay, well, we need to buy this now, or we need to resupply this, and take a look at that for the next couple of months to make sure we're not cutting ourselves short? And I know it's something that, of course, you don't know right now off the top of your head, but I think maybe we need to take a look at that and make sure that we're, like I said, not cutting ourselves short on that. I think what we need to do is, you know, talking with Mr. Murphy, and I know as mentioned that, you know, what I said to him, I'd rather see us get our costs covered as a city, so we don't have to go into our reserves to make sure that we're covering those. So if we do that, and we want to make sure our reserves at a certain dollar amount, we're just rolling this back and having the citizens pay for it. And I don't want that. I don't want this tax back to the citizens if we dip into our reserves, and we have to, if we're going to give money away. And I just want to make sure we're covered. Because that's not helping anybody, it's hurting everybody across the board then.
Mr. President, I mean, I think, yeah, Carla, if you, I know we spoke about that a little bit earlier today, if you can, maybe kind of give a little bit of a rundown as far as what, how we're tracking our costs and kind of where we're at with potential expenses so far, as on the cities, on the city side.
When I gave that dollar amount, about $250,000, we have built some dollars in there. We are working with each department head, they're trying to figure out ways to mitigate even spreading the virus and cleaning the air within their buildings. I know Reed and I just spoke before the meeting on things we might have to do in the arenas, and so that is probably why we've been a little slow about getting the dollars out, is because we want to make sure that the city is covered. You know, when I talked with Reed, you know, there's a lot of things that we might have to do to the arenas, even shuffle people in one door. So we're going to have to put things up for that. We might have to close off sections, and we're looking at possibly getting projectors in there so that if people can't come to the game, we can televise it. So we are working on those things, and I'm sorry if it's, you know, for some people, it seems like we're being slow of getting the dollars out, but we're doing exactly what you're saying, Mark, is we want to make sure that the city is covered, and so that we do not have to dip in fund balances to cover costs that we did not anticipate.
No, and I appreciate you going, making sure you're doing this. I'm not, I'm not complaining of moving slowly, I'm just saying I want to make sure that we are getting everything covered. Because, like I said, if we don't cover it, and we say, okay, EDA, here's a chunk of money, and all of a sudden, we had to say, well, with the arenas, we have to put in new air handlers or whatever it may be, and those are X amount of money, and all of a sudden, we're at city cost of $400,000 or $500,000, and we don't have any money left over because we already gave it to the EDA. Then we're dipping into our reserves, and all of a sudden, we're like, okay, now we have to build these reserves back up, and down the road, it's going to go back, and the citizens are going to have to pay for it. And I don't think that's right. So I just, not saying you're not doing the right thing, I just want to make sure we're all doing, covering what we need to cover. So, Mayor?
And I think we all agree with that, Mr. President.
One of the keys-
And I appreciate that you brought that up. Thank you, Mark.
Mayor?
One of the keys to all of this is the ability to anticipate the expenses to the end of this time period, because if all we do is, and I know nobody's advocating this, but if all we did was go ahead and pay for things as they happen, right up to the end of this accounting period, we did not have the opportunity to send it over to the EDA for the businesses. And so that ability to anticipate future costs in this case is very, very important. The air quality at the Civic Center really is more important now than ever, and that has to be looked at, certainly in the recycling of air. President Olsted sent out the economic resiliency grants available for North Dakota businesses. So this is something put out by the state of North Dakota. And I know Mr. Gordy, our EDA Director, said, you know what, that's very much in line with what we're doing. But there are a couple phrases in here that really hit home to me. This is, I believe these to be so important right at this moment in this thing. And one of the items here, they want to show how the grant will improve the business's COVID-19 resiliency and restore consumer confidence. Those are two hugely important things right now. A business has to have that agility, that resiliency that it would have potentially lost without some of the help that we're getting. You know, if you are seeing revenues fall, expenses did not go down, and you're now going into the hole, it's kind of- it's kind of an emergency situation. You start to not think ahead and plan ahead and even spend in important ways. You just start to go into damage control and that's a, that's a ship that's going to be in danger of sinking. But if we threw these programs, and this is what the CARES Act did with the Paycheck Protection Program, it filled that hole that would have been created and let businesses stay agile, let businesses stay looking, planning ahead. And, and how do you restore consumer confidence when you don't have enough money to buy the masks? Or the gloves or the sanitizer or all, I mean, so it's, it's a big deal for the rebound of our economy. And for the people to get back to trusting our retail, our service and all. Really give these businesses the chance to spend freely on the protective equipment that they need. They should not have to cut corners. They should have the freedom to spend freely because only that brings back the confidence of the consumer, brings back the tax base. And so I know I'm speaking in favor of allocating a portion of these toward business. And I'm not saying it should be all or even half. You know, if it's a third of the total funds available or some percentage, which will have to be determined by what's the need among the business? And what is the need among the city and other entities that the city might partner with, including the schools? And then whatever association we have with the county. Yeah, I would want every business to, to look at this moment and say, you know what? If I, if doing the right thing is handing a mask to my customers who come in, who didn't bring a mask, if that's the right thing to do, to really make it safe and to really bolster that confidence, not have to send them home or out to the car. We want them to have the freedom to do that, to keep building their business even in this environment.
Yeah, Carla, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, we're only talking a little over $400,000 here by the time the city gets theirs out of there right now, right?
Yes.
So I guess I kind of think that we should probably stick to the COVID related stuff. Because if you go to lost revenue, that's going to disappear like boom. So that's why I think we should just stick with like, with the COVID related stuff there too. Because that's, that's not a whole lot of money when we're talking, what we're talking about right now. That's going to go quickly in itself. So that'd be my recommendation. We stick with just COVID related.
Our biggest issue is getting information from businesses on what they have spent. Like I said, Paul had sent out a survey. We did not get much of a response. We are meeting with Polk County on Friday and they do have dollars that I guess Paul and I would anticipate they might give to us. Because we know the businesses better within our community than they do. And so there might be some more dollars to help with that, that Polk County can transfer to us.
Anything else, Dale?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Riepel?
Just several little items. Some of the programs that were offered before by the state, federal government, were not all inclusive for all small businesses. Some were just taken out of the picture. A lot of them were mon-pa operations. What I'd like to see is if you're going to come up with a plan to give, I want a more defined plan and a cap on the funds available to each business. I think Mr. Gordy gave an analogy of $100,000, 50 cents on the dollars, $50,000 to one business. That would be totally unacceptable in my mind. We've got a lot of businesses that need the money. Most of the smaller shops are already cutting costs and corners to try to make ends meet. They're the ones that need the help. Our bigger ones, they've got plenty of help already. So I, I want to see a plan before I'd even release funds to the EDA.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor?
And I know somewhere in the, in the not too distant future, I think the, the guidance that the EDA is going to need from us is of that roughly 680,000 allocation, excuse me, 668 allocation that'll come our way. Can they anticipate a portion of that being available to distribute to businesses? And somewhere they're going to want us to give some guidance, it'll be 100,000, it'll be 200,000, it'll be 300,000. It'll be somewhere in that range. It'll be between 1 and 300 of that 668 I think that we would allocate to business. And so with Carla's help and with all the other analysis that we're doing, that's the kind of, of guidance they're going to need from us as soon as we can get it. Because if we lag too much, we don't leave them the time for the businesses to make the application, to show how they spent the money and whatnot. Not that we have to rush it too much, but we also cannot lag. Otherwise the businesses will not be able to capitalize on that opportunity.
Anybody else have anything at this time? Alrighty. Carla or Paul, you have anything else to add? If not, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Only that we'll have more information. Go ahead, Paul.
I was just saying thank you for your time today and the guidance you've given us. And we, like Carla is starting to say, we'll be getting more information as we go along. And I'm sure this is going to be an ongoing discussion.
And we look forward to speaking with Polk County on Friday. So
Yes.
We'll have more information, you know, after we speak with them.
Okay, tell them to send lots of money our way.
We are the biggest city in the county.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Move on to number three, consider street repair to 20th Street Northwest. Mr. Stordahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. As all of you are aware, 20th Street Northwest isn't in the best condition. Excuse me, there are several areas where the asphalt has been pushed up. Due to some frost boils this spring, on the 16th of July, the mayor, Mr. Olsted, Mr. Riepel, Steve Emery and I met on 20th to discuss and review some of the damage and discuss how to repair or replace some of the areas. We talked about long-term plans and maybe some short-term plans. And after some discussion, the mayor asked us to get some estimates for, for just a temporary repair. The repair estimates that I, that I got are not to replace the asphalt, but rather dig out, cut out and dig out the areas that are, that are pushed up. And replace first with Geo, Geo grid and then fill with 16 inches of crushed concrete, concrete as a temporary repair. So I've included the two estimates with the RCA today. One was from RJ Zaveron Sons for $12,750. The other one was from OP Construction for $16,900. If the council wishes to move forward with this repair, I would recommend that they award the project RJ, RJ Zaveron Sons.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Stordahl? I see none. No. Mayor, do you have something?
We know where we stand on those two streets, 20th and 5th. We're at a bit of an impasse because the best remedy for those two streets would be street replacement. From an engineering standpoint, between all of the, the challenges that are there, the high water table, the unstable soils and all the rest of it, those streets have, have gone past their usable lifespan. The soil cement and the whole base below has, has kind of broken up. However, in our, in our current street replacement policy, we would allocate special assessments, $40,000, $50,000, $60,000 to some of those residents. And they would have to initiate that through coming back to us requesting the work would be done. And they've pretty strongly indicated that no such request is forthcoming based on those high costs. And so that's our impasse. The street is breaking down and the cost of replacement is, is higher than they can handle in our current street replacement policy, which by the way, I am fine with it. We, we haggled for several years about changing and modifying the street replacement policy. That's going to be what it is and it's fine. It's, it's a good policy. We can work with it. But what we're left with then is a, a significant project to create a new surface on that street short of full replacement, right? We're not, it's not in the, in the near future to put a, a whole new street in. It's cost prohibitive. And it's not a good bit of leadership on our part if we let that street just, just break up and disappear. That is an unacceptable way of running a city and that's on us. That part of it's on us. And so my hope would be that as we do, an area that has, these, these frost boils came up about two feet. We probably saw that in a whole long strip, kind of almost right up the middle of the road, a very long strip of frost boils, almost two feet high. And so the hope with this is if you can cut it down that 16 inches, come back with the grid, the, the fabric that, that holds your, your material above the, the fill level, and then you can pack that up. Perhaps in one area after another, we can create a, a better base that will become more firm for the more limited project. So this, it is a temporary fix, but it goes deep enough that, and Mr. Emery may not agree, it goes deep enough and packs in enough with crushed concrete to 16 inch depth with Geo grid that it may be a base in a more limited project that you could just cut those first four or five inches, lay some asphalt in there and, and build off of that. So this is not, we're not doing a, a whole series of Band-Aids. We are creating maybe a good base for a more limited project to go forward. And I know that makes Mr. Emery's skin crawl because as an engineer, he sees the very best thing for that would be complete replacement all the way curb to curb, including the curbs. But again, that's probably off the table in the foreseeable future. And we as, as leadership need to step up and, and forge a way to get that street solid and, and firm and, and in a price that they can, that they can afford. Eventually we're going to have a project that is assessed to the property owners of hopefully a more limited scale. That would be what I see as being the end result of this.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I, I would be in favor of this, what I'll call a temporary fix. But I think as what you're referring to there, Mayor, the rest of the city has paid their due and their share there to fix their streets and everything. I don't think that the city needs to go in and fix the street totally, but we can live with doing this repair because it is, it's actually kind of dangerous. So I, I could live with that, with doing the, the basic repairs like we're talking.
Anybody else have anything at this time? Mr. Vedder?
Thank you, Mr. President. If this is a one-time thing, I'm fine with it, but I get the impression, Mr. Mayor, that you're looking at next year, we're going to come back and do a little bit of this on, and then the year after we'll come back and do a little bit of this one. And finally, we're going to nickel and dime the city into just doing the whole damn thing. I'd rather take the $12,000 and hire a, an assessor to assess a property before we do anything and assess the property as if the street were completely redone. And I'm guessing that the value of that home is going to go up significantly, significantly, if not be able to cover the entire cost of assessment to redo the street. And therefore the city, as you say, is, is our right and we should be doing something with that road, that we can go in and just assess the people then for the road and redo it. And they would have no argument as to you didn't increase the value of our property by the amount of the special assessments. I think we're at that point where, yeah, we would.
He'll be happy to know that we have begun the, the process of requesting a couple of different appraisals. We'll take one of the more affordable or economical homes in that area and then maybe one of the larger homes. And we'll have the appraisal done as if before and after the street. So we've already begun that process, not that it's been ordered, but the, it's in the works. And then if there would be a dollar amount that would have to come before the council, it will. But that is something we discussed as we stood there to say, you know what, we need that. We absolutely need that information to take the next step. So we're, we're thinking the same way.
Anybody else have anything at this time? Last time I'm asking. Thanks, Jason. Move on to number four, consider Reinhardt Road Repair. Mr. Stordahl?
Thanks, Mr. President. So Reinhardt Drive southeast between Greenway Boulevard and the edge of the city limits going south there. We had a few frost boils that also popped up there. The road isn't in the greatest condition. We have made a few other repairs on that road as well. But these are pretty, pretty significant and pretty bad. There, I, I had some conversation with the township as well since they own half the road up to about Brandon. And there's an area in there that needs to be totally milled out, like a four-inch overlay. And then there's two other areas in there, one of which we would split the cost with Reinhardt Township. And the other would be on the city because it's further north, but that would require a two-inch milling overlay. I got a couple, couple estimates, one from Zaveron's, one from OP. Zaveron's was the low, the low bid. In the RCA, I misprinted it. I have Huntsville in there, but it's actually Reinhardt Township. I spoke with Mr. Brooks and he brought this forward to their board. And their board is in favor of doing options one and two that would include their, their portions of the road. I guess what I'm asking council approval for tonight is to repair all three of the areas on Reinhardt. Some things down the road to kind of consider as well, this repair I believe is necessary. I mean, the, the road is pushed up and maybe come impassable at some point if we don't do the repair. But down the road, you know, this, once there's more development on the east side of Reinhardt, the intent is to lower the road and redo it with curb and gutter at that time. But we don't know when that time will be. So I think in the meantime, we have to do what's necessary to keep the road passable. That is my request. Are there any questions?
Anybody have anything? Mr. Mayor?
Do you have money in your quarter of a million fund or is there another source of funds?
We have money for the repair.
Anybody else have anything at this time? See none. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to number five, discussion on recreation improvement and facilities plan. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. President, Council. First, I guess thank you for allowing me to push this off a couple of weeks. It was on the agenda a few weeks ago, but I had to leave that meeting early for a personal appointment. So thank you for that. Should I, would you guys like to see me try to share my screen? It looks like I don't have the capability to, so hopefully you all have a packet, have the presentation in front of you in your packet and we can just walk through it together.
See Reed, I will switch you over to be host. You, you can change, you can share a screen then.
Okay. So as we're waiting for that, just a brief summary for all of you. What I'm hoping to be able to do tonight is just share through the kind of a, what I've put together as a combination of results. And hopefully you can see it now. Can you all see the screen now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. I can't, the view changes on my side and I have no experience with it, so. So hopefully be able to share with all of you.
Reed, 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 this, Mark, we, we see your desktop. We don't see the presentation though.
You don't?
It's David's desktop?
You are viewing David's screen, it says.
Mr. Murphy?
How about this one?
There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Thank you for bearing with me. Okay, so the hope for the presentation that I'll share with all of you tonight is that what I've worked up to do is taking the survey results from the facility surveys we've done and mix those with the combination of the priorities that we feel we have kind of within the facilities that were, were found through the initial building study we had done about a year ago on the ice arenas and factor those with the potential for the, the revenue that could be had off the 1% sales tax that had been approved about in January, February timeframe to try to see what, what potential projects could look like if revenue of that sort was to become available. And ultimately hope to be able to show or, or to continue heading a direction of a master plan for these facilities that would allow us to prioritize which projects we hope to, to accomplish. And even then be able to take the next step with a community effort of starting a fundraising process. So that if and when, an opportunity to be able to go back down to the state for asking for support for a local sales tax, we'd hopefully be able to be able to go down there with some fundraising in tow already to be able to show that the local support is here and that we're going to make every effort to be able to bring it along as, as we need to, to make it successful. bring it along as we need to, to make it successful. So I'm going to walk through kind of what I think some of our survey results have told us and then summarize potentially what budgets could look like for some of these projects. So just kind of summarizing there with the study goals, I think that's what I really just hit on there. And really, more importantly than anything, I think in the survey results, we'll find, we've seen that they've designated, the survey results have designated, I think, a few kind of higher priorities that we should focus our efforts on, as well as really focusing towards the functionality and the accessibility and the usability of our facilities. And the way I read and take those is making every effort to make these facilities be of the nature that they can become as close to year-round facilities as possible, rather than just five or six-month buildings, but to have them become year-round, that can be used for as many functions, as many community events as we can. So touching on that recreation facility priorities, number one, the highest rated of this first survey we did was to repair and renovate the Civic Center as a broad statement that, you know, could touch a lot of areas, and we'll touch on that later. But that was the highest priority amongst all the residents that took the surveys, that that should be our main focus, is making sure that that building stays relevant, stays usable, and functions efficiently as it can for its age and within to plan for the next 50 years of its use or more. The second thing that we found in those priorities is that the VFW Arena was ranked highest with an effort to have it remain an ice arena. The idea of having to become a multipurpose facility wasn't far behind in scoring on the surveys, but it did fall behind it remaining an ice arena. And I think, you know, that lends itself pretty closely to the economics of it as well. We saw in that initial building study we did, the extreme costs that we would see if we wanted to build a new ice arena to replace that sheet of ice and be able to transition that into a multipurpose building. So I think that those two things help kind of put it into focus a little more for us. One thing we didn't survey or review in our first building study, but we had come up a lot in the survey process, even in the comment section, is that people would like, especially the users of the facility, would really like to see the Blue Line Arena improved upon. So that might be something that'd be worth us putting more time into how that could be improved. I personally think a couple of small improvements in the sightlines for a spectator and how they'd be able to watch the game, and then even the temperature, the ambient temperature in the building, being able to be improved upon for the players and spectators to make it more comfortable, I think would go a long ways in answering some of the critics that have listed concerns towards that arena. The number four is to improve the baseball complex. Of course, the Stealth Park complex was included in the sales tax proposal that we had, and that ranked actually second of all the priorities in order of ranking, second behind the Civic Center, is the next most important to our survey respondents to see improvements go there. So that's included in this report. And then ultimately, as I touched on earlier, improving in these, the facilities and their function and the usability to try to make sure we can hit as many user groups and as many demographics of our community as possible. So with that, the outcome is obviously long-term planning for these facilities, increasing the functionality, improving safety and accessibility, and hopefully, the ability to be able to host more special events, regional activities, tournaments, and so forth. So focusing on the arenas, again, we didn't touch a lot in the survey on it, but it remains the reason that we're doing this work in the first place is the R22 ice plants within the Civic Center and the VFW Arena. Those both are in need of major work, and of course, we all know a lot about that with the EPA's regulations. So those remain the number one priorities in my mind for the projects. The renovating the arenas to include accessibility improvements, exterior envelope of the building's interior work, like the VFW's interior, whether it be an insulation base or interior paint to improve the building envelope. In that way, restructuring, reconstructing parking lots, both at the Civic Center and at the VFW Arena sites are high in the project goal list. And then again, to touch on it one more time, the locker room use configurations and the usability of the arenas, to try to make those arenas become the community centers we hope for them to be for year-round use. So going into budgets, this is kind of the big one I'd like to spend the most time on if we could. The way that I tried to lay this out for all of you is taking, what we did is we took the work that JLG did in their building review. So the pricing that we used to put this together, for all of your knowledge, is the same pricing that we had a year ago when we had the first building reviewed done. It's using 2021 construction estimates to do that study, so we would certainly need to plan for that. What they've suggested is that we should plan for 3% per year escalation when we relate these dollars to what they could look like in 2022 or beyond. But it gives us, I think, now at least a good snapshot of what our goals could be going forward. The priorities, again, as they align to the project goals from the previous slide, are the ice systems at the Civic Center to replace the ice plant. It's suggested an ammonia plant, that's kind of becoming more of the industry regular use for an ice arena, to replace it, an industrial-sized plant similar to what we have with R22, that ammonia ice plant, and then replacing the floor at $1.7 million. Mechanical, electrical, technology, I bulked those all in to the same group, but that's replacing the air handlers, the, all the electrical systems within the building to get them all up to date at $1 million. Building code, ADA, safety, things you can see listed, like grab rails at the upper bowl, handrails on the steps as you walk down the seating and the steps in the Civic Center and so forth, surveillance systems, emergency generators at 850. And then site improvements is the largest number in total. That's the parking lot reconstruction, ADA parking, some exterior building work at 2.14 million. And then I included in this case a couple of options that we found, suggested to us through the survey process and through conversations with some of our users, hockey coaches, figure skating members and so forth. And one of the things that a lot have asked is rather than building the addition on the Civic Center to include a new arena, what would an addition to only include locker rooms look like? Again, to replace those locker rooms that are not accessible right now, that are in the basement and are very undersized. The current locker rooms we have are 250 square feet. They're 16 foot by 16 foot roughly. And today, a regular community locker room for a youth team to dress in is about 400 square feet. So I'm looking at adding a lot of space for locker rooms in that. This would be, we haven't done design work, but looking at a west addition on the Civic Center at 5,900 square feet, and the price for that would be 2.65 million is what it would be estimated at. Again, I want to caution all of this as much as I can. This is very early construction estimates at 2021 prices. It essentially takes a square footage times a price per square foot, that construction estimate cost for the industry standard to give us that price. As we got, if we wanted to continue down this road and approach, looking closer at a design concept or looking at how we would program an addition of this size specifically, we could narrow down that price a little closer to what we should expect it to be. And then I also included, if we did not do a new addition on the west side and we just simply wanted to renovate the boys' locker room to fix the ADA concerns there and reorganize that space so it'll work better for the team they have in current times, to plan about $500,000 for that. Not included in the base price, again, the base price, I tried to keep it as closely as I could to replacing the things that have to be replaced, whether that be through building code or through maintenance needs, primary immediate maintenance needs, I should say. I did not include replacing the air handler system with high-efficiency boilers. Right now, it's an electric heat system in that building that reclaimed some heat off the compressor and then compensates with electric heat to make the remainder. I did not include a new system in that, but you can see that additional price at 1.84 million if we wanted to include something like that for the entire building at the Civic Center. So ultimately, you can see what the base price would be and then what some of the options could add up to at the Civic Center. The VFW Arena, I laid out in largely the same way, looking at ice systems at about the same price as the Civic Center would be to replace the current direct R22 with a similar setup. The building envelope, interior finishes at $700,000, that would replace the roof, insulate the interior walls, clean up the way that the water drains away from the building on the outside, add a couple of stoops at the exterior entrances to the building and so forth. For that price, $700,000. Building code, ADA, safety, it's a lot less here to work through or to add than it is at the Civic Center, largely because it's a much more open building and an open space, so it's easier, cheaper to get to it. It helps that it's all on one level. There is some ADA work that needs to be done there, but it's a lot more minimal in cost than the Civic Center would be. And then site improvements at 1.13 million, that would be to reconstruct the parking lot, change the way that that parking lot, even the size of it to a degree, to make it a little larger, to have it be a better space for both, the access to both the VFW and the Blue Line Arena. The mechanical is a large number at the VFW. The hot water heaters are $19.97. The plumbing fixtures are all original with the building in many cases. It has no air handler or no air movement in the locker rooms at all. That is currently just an electric heat panel that hangs from the ceiling, especially in today's world and what we're looking at and discussing with air reclaim and cleaning and purifying air in the day of the COVID that we're dealing with. I would say that would be a high priority in this system. So total base priority for all the VFW is 5.3 million, to be able to accomplish all that work. And then again, I listed a number of alternate options, depending upon programming and a discussion that could be had on what our goal is for these, the building of the VFW and the Blue Line Arena kind of in unison, what they could look like and how they could be used. Of course, summer ice there, we use the VFW Arena currently for summer ice. There would be a need for a dehumidification system in order to be able to do that in higher ambient temperatures at about a half million dollars. And then some more options for renovations of concessions and bathrooms, field turf for non-icing use. The last one, that would be the most important one to touch on now, I believe, and we'll touch on that on the next slide, is a building addition to connect the VFW and the Blue Line Arena together. Again, in our survey, that was something that we discussed or we heard back from, feedback from people, is rather than building a new arena at the Civic Center, what would it look like or would there be any potential to make an addition on the VFW Arena that could connect the Blue Line and help answer a lot of our concerns or issues in both of those arenas in the same setting? And so this is just a quick drawing that was done by JLG, more than anything to lay out square footage and what a potential square footage of an addition could look like. As you can see in this idea, we could create a common entrance between the two buildings that could be used to enter each arena with a community space, concession stands, potential for a shared mechanical room that could, even if we wanted to go as far as having one ice plant serve both arenas, that could certainly be included for a cost in a shared room for the Zamboni potentially even. The outcome, I think, would be as great for the Blue Line Arena as it would be for the VFW, and that could answer some of our concerns of, or our requests from users of having a warmer space to be able to watch ice or activity going on in the Blue Line, giving them some windows to be able to see what's happening on the rink could be a benefit as well. So by no means is this a design or meant to show how the space could be used, but at the very least could show us what square footage could look like. And that square footage we used to come up with a cost estimate of that addition at about 1.7 million, just short of that, 1.66 million is what I listed in the slide. And then finally, the Blue Line Arena, just included that with a couple of options. One, if we were going to look at doing some sort of a building addition to connect the two arenas, it could make a lot of sense for us long-term to make the improvements right away to the ice plant so that we sized it so an ice plant for the VFW could serve both ranks, have that tied in with a new floor in the Blue Line Arena, and have it, again, one ice plant be able to serve both arenas. Long-term savings on that could be well worth the upfront cost. And then a heat source, we've heard from many people that having a heat source even in the immediate future would be great in that arena. The price for that would be about $30,000. And I'm in discussion right now with our local Blue Line Club about finding a way to start a fundraiser sooner than later to be able to put radiant heating panels over the spectator area and over the players' bench area within that building to try to answer that issue as soon as we could, potentially even in the next, in the next year here. As it goes to the total numbers, again, a base priority I laid out for all of you, about $11 million. And then, as you can see, depending upon design considerations and what we set as our master plan, as our goals for this project, we could easily see up to seven and a half million extra in building additions or alternate options to add to the work. So that answers the arenas or lays out the arenas. Next, I want to touch on the Stealth Park project before just opening it up for any comments or questions. Again, Stealth Park, as I mentioned, was second overall in our highest priority amongst the survey respondents. And in the survey results, I think the biggest thing that we found, the highest ranking, was again, the usability of the complex, improving drainage and improving lighting, improving the plain surface to make it more usable for a longer season and safer, really rose to the top in the highest priorities for the survey respondents. In one, it was interesting in the case of the large respondents as a group, if we asked the question of if turf is important at this complex, the cumulative answer is turf was the least of the priorities for the entire project. But if we narrowed it down to the baseball-specific demographic that answered the questions, turf rose from seventh on the list up to third on the list. Improved drainage and length of season usability were one and two, but turf was third. And so after we took the survey results, our Parks and Rec staff, we sat down with a group of the baseball, what I would consider the baseball community, coaches, a few former players that are from our program that have gone on to play collegiate baseball and seen complexes throughout the region, and asked them, you know, within these survey results and within the priorities for the project, what would you like to see or what do you think would be the thing to kind of push towards as a goal if we could just lay it out and say, this is what our top wish would be? So that's part of what we used to create the project goals that you see on the bottom half of this slide. The number one answer was improving drainage on the current field that people in town would refer to as the Legion Field. Improving the drainage on that and the grading of the infield so that after we get a heavy rain, that it can respond quick enough to be able to still get games in would be the top priority that anybody would have. And again, that, as we get into pricing, we'll see that we hope that could be something that I think is very realistic for us to accomplish, even if that became a local project for our home run club and our local volunteer groups and supporters to be able to tackle. I think that that could be realistic to improve upon. The second priority that the baseball groups specifically, we spent a lot of time discussing, and again, it's a goal, would be to fully invest in reconstructing a second field to become a new primary field at that complex. Leaving the current Legion Field essentially as it is and taking the second field that's there and totally reconstructing it to make that the primary use field would encourage or allow us to have two fields with lighting that could be used for competitions and then really set the goal high in seeing what we could accomplish between fundraising and between any revenue sources we could find to make that field as usable as possible for as long of a time as possible. And again, I go back to the synthetic turf for that purpose of if we're going to set a goal and we're going to dream about what we hope to accomplish, going the route of synthetic turf, I think in our geographic area and the temperature settings we have would improve our playability immensely in being able to get snow off of that field in March and know that when baseball season starts that we'd be able to host games and not only host our own games as a local team, but even become a regional destination for teams in our area that have troubles with their own fields to be able to come and play. Some of the people we met with that are former players that play at colleges not too far from here, you know, even voiced that opinion that if we did- from here, you know, even voiced that opinion that if we did it right, that we could even host a, a large number of college games on this field to, to boost our revenue and to boost the use of the complex. So I do think that that would be a great goal for us to work towards, but ultimately keeping in mind that we'd love to have two fields that were competition ready, uh, to be able to host tournaments and host events of a higher level section or state tournaments would be, should, would and should be a goal for us at this complex. Uh, and so again, I, I listed the feasibility list on the next slide. Uh, as you can see, the main Legion Field, I laid out those two prices for a couple hundred thousand dollars to be able to rebuild the infield with drain tile, fabric and a, a better base with an aggregate grass turf. Uh, and then the reconstructing of the second field known as the Babe Ruth Field and what that price looks like. And again, uh, just as we do at the arena project, we see that that total number adds up to more than what we felt like we'd be able to generate in sales tax revenue on a one percent. Uh, but I would, I would uh, encourage all of us at this point to remain open-minded to a, a degree of, uh, that this, we're still in a planning and setting goals phase, uh, and, and continue to move forward to some degree if we feel like this is the path that we want to lean towards, to working as a community to see what kind of group we can put together. Uh, and, and when the time is right, I caution that when the time is right, uh, to be able to write for grants, to, to seek sponsors, to seek donations, uh, and see what kind of base we can come up with to hopefully, hopefully be a boost to our facilities, uh, and even help, uh, ensure or, or encourage the potential for the sales tax being something that can help fund these projects. Uh, so with all of that said, the next steps that I've, I've laid out, what I'm really hoping to, to garner from all of you tonight as a council is feedback on the priorities as I've listed them for you tonight, the goals that we should set. Uh, are we in line? Am I in line with what all of you would like to see continued, uh, on this input phase? Uh, and ultimately, hopefully, we could continue to work towards this, set a master plan for all of these facilities, uh, with some design concepts and a little more, uh, solid numbers and what a budget could look like. And then organizing a task force, uh, these are listed in no particular order, but organizing a group or user group or a task force to be able to set fundraising goals and a timeline to be able to do so to have that line up with any potential sales tax. So with that, I'd love to take any questions or discussion.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Reed, I think you hit her on the nose there when you were talking. You do like to set your goals high. I have some questions, but I don't think I want to bring them up tonight. Um, I'd rather do a little research and stuff on it first before I do. So, um, but yeah, you definitely set them high.
Mayor.
And to that point, Mr. Helms, um, I know we're still in the process of identifying our top priorities and to anyone in the community that's looking at this grand total and saying, oh, boy, we're back to a, a much higher tax amount. Um, in this process, we'll be able to again, clarify priorities and, and hopefully drill that number down into an affordable level. Um, and with the fundraising part of it and the sponsorships and so on, we don't know, but I think we're still right in line with what we've always talked about as to the amount that it would be and the number of years. Nothing's changed there, but you always, it has to start like this and then you kind of sift it down and, and you want to make sure that every dollar justifies itself. And, and the way that you do that is you, you look at everything that would be good to have and then you identify your top priorities. You've probably been part of stuff like that. And we'll all have a final word on what's the scope of this thing in the end. I think this, we're on a great road. I appreciate what we're up to here.
Mr. Helms.
Yeah, one more thing. I guess I'd like to say that beings that they want to keep the VFW arena as a ice arena, um, maybe we should look at that Blue Line Arena and make that a multi-purpose building, uh, to maybe take care of some of the rest of the residents and stuff of Eastman Forks that maybe isn't so involved in hockey. Maybe we could use that building to make that a multi-purpose one. We could look at that maybe or something. It's just a thought.
Anybody else?
You know, and I would, if I could respond to that, Mr. President, I would say just in the survey process, we did hear from a, a large number, uh, not the majority, but a number of residents that would like to see a multi-purpose facility. There was support for that project. Um, where the reason it's not in as a year-round multi-purpose facility in the plan anymore is just that we've, we saw that in the initial feasibility study, the price that that came back to, if we're going to remain with three sheets of ice uh, in our winter season and then still have another structure that became a multi-purpose facility, the upfront cost of that became, uh, you know, that's how we settled on a two percent sales tax initially in the first place. And so I, I would be all for studying uh, these facilities further and if we could find a way to make a space that could be used as a multi-purpose center, um, you know, but we, we would have to have a programming discussion as well on how ice is used and the need for three sheets of ice, you know, under our current participation in our skating and our hockey programs to make sure it all fits together as well. I'd hate to see us go backwards in programs, um, as a whole, as, as an end mean of this project.
Anybody else have any questions or comments at this time? I think just keep forge and add, Reed, and um, keep at it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, move on to number six, request to replace compressor control panel at VFW Arena. Reed.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Uh, just transitioning it then into our current compressor at the VFW. Uh, the control panels that are in the, in the compressor room, there are two, two compressors, so a separate control panel on each. Essentially the computer that tells the, the ice compressor when to run. Uh, it reads, gives us all of our suction and discharge readings. The one that we have there, um, from what I've been told, similar to any other computer, when a company puts out a computer program or a computer system, typically they manufacture it for about five to seven years before they stop production or manufacturing of the parts for that one. Uh, and then typically for another five to seven years after they stop manufacturing, they discontinue support. So a computer has about ten to fourteen years of life between part production and support. Uh, the panels that we have there now, I've been told, have not, not been supported for more than ten years to give us an age of, of, uh, how long they've been kind of obsolete, so to speak. Um, so I've worked with a couple of different companies and found a retrofit panel that could work, a new model, uh, that they could retrofit to fit on our current compressor system, uh, and included pricing on, from Johnson Controls and from Simco Refrigeration for that. Johnson Controls, uh, is actually the direct supplier of this, of the Frick panel that I've priced. That's what would be the direct replacement of what's there now. So it'd be a great fit. Uh, and they've got the low price between the two. I would recommend that we would replace both panels. We do use both, um, compressors, one at a time, but we do through the season typically need to use each of them at different points. Um, because we find that a lot, we have repairs on other parts that, uh, components that will go bad, that we'll have to switch the other one on, uh, while we're waiting for parts or waiting for repairs to take place. So I would, I would appreciate and, and recommend that we would support replacing both of these panels at this time. Um, I did not budget in two thousand twenty for this work. I, I wasn't aware there was a direct replacement of the panel, so I didn't even know that we could find it. But through the work this year, found that there is a replacement we could retrofit. Uh, in the packet I listed that Carla and I had discussed using the CARES dollars for it, one of the great benefits of it is that it would, this would bring us to be able to have remote access to the compressor, to be able to run the compressor, start, stop, change runtimes, change, change ice temperatures, uh, from an outside office, so that could qualify for workplace mitigation. Since I've taught or, and submitted the proposal, Carla and I have further discussed it and further discussed where we could see CARES Act dollars being needed to be used within our city facility and, and she's recommended in discussion with myself now that we would use building maintenance dollars for this instead. There is building maintenance dollars available still to be used in two thousand twenty. So I would change our recommendation on it that we would still do it, but that we'd use building maintenance dollars for the work.
Anybody have any questions for Reed?
Reed, um, are these control panels, would they, if, if we did the change on these compressors and stuff, would these control panels still work on them or is this something just for this particular, for these particular machines?
Unfortunately, I would say no, they would not work with a new system. Um, they're, they're pretty specific to this, this kind of compressor that we have. And of course, that, this compressor being one that would be replaced completely with an ammonia base, I wouldn't think it would be likely that they'd be able to be reused, unfortunately.
Okay. And then one other question on some of these parts that you're looking for, especially these controls and stuff like that. Um, do these people ever check with DigiKey in favor? Because I'll tell you, DigiKey is probably, they handle over a hundred thousand, I think it's more than that, but I know they have over a hundred thousand different parts up there and they, they, you know, that's probably where a lot of this stuff comes from to begin with. Has, does anybody ever check there or?
That's, that's a great question, not one that I have an answer for. Uh, when it comes to this panel itself, again, Johnson Controls is, is, uh, the, the corporate company that owns Frick. So these panels are produced by Frick and Johnson Controls owns Frick. Uh, so they're directly supplied. They have the direct supplier for that. Doesn't mean the DigiKey wouldn't supply it or, or do, you know, be involved in it somehow, but I don't have that answer. I would say on the old panels though, we have exhausted, uh, Eagle Electric has been incredibly helpful in, in trying to find parts for the old panels that we have pieced together for years and we've exhausted every effort possible from everywhere in the area to find parts, old parts, replacement parts, off the shelf everywhere and have, have run out of resources on those ones.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? See none, sir. Thank you so much. Uh, consider request for September ice install at VFW Arena. Reed.
All right, thank you again. So, uh, due to COVID, we canceled the June camps. The Blue Line Club canceled their June hockey camps, uh, and asked at that time if things are opened up more by the fall, could we look at having ice in September in a replacement of June? Um, initially I said that could be a concern if we're able to have the arts and crafts show. I would want to make sure that we don't have to worry about conflicting dates with that. Uh, and as I've, I think I've updated all of you, uh, the arts and crafts is still hoping to have an event, but if they do, they're going to limit it to the civic center sites only to help just with crowd control and being able to manage that more successfully. Um, so, uh, the, uh, Blue Line Club has asked if they could put ice in for the dates of, uh, September fourteenth, Monday, September fourteenth, that date has changed from what I put in the RCA, uh, through October ninth, we would rent the building to them. I've proposed a price of eighty-seven fifty for that price, that, uh, rental rate. Uh, that's about three hundred and fifty dollars a day, uh, and that would cover our costs for our staffing and for operation of the building, the utilities and so forth to be able to run the building for those dates.
Anybody have any questions for Reed?
Would you just leave the ice on, Reed, after that? Are you just going to leave the ice on? Or would you take it off in October?
No, I, correct, we would leave the ice on. So our regular start date under a typical year would always be that Saturday of October tenth. So this would allow us to install it. We'd put all the, the paint down, the lines that the sponsor adds all at the beginning and leave it in through the duration of the year.
Okay. Anybody else have, Mr. Repel?
Besides the camp, Reed, we'd still be renting the extra ice time out.
Uh, that would be if you guys wanted to make a different decision on that, it certainly would be up to you. The way that we have this priced and the way that it's been done for years is we would just rent all of the ice time to the Blue Line Club. We would operate the building still. The Blue Line Club would have all the, all of the ice time and they would turn around and sublease, uh, to other events if they chose to be able to recoup their, some of their cost.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Thank you, sir. Move on to number eight, discussion of proposed twenty twenty-one budget. Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now to the fun stuff. I know you guys have been bored with everything now, so we're going to move into budgets, which is really exciting. I know you're all ready to do it. Um, so I sent you packets on the budgets. I, um, if you look at the first, uh, summary, without a COLA, um, there is a negative six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, the majority of that has to do with capital improvements. If you look from one year to the next, our personnel costs with the steps is at about five percent. Um, I did put in that budget brief that has all the colors in it, that if we use our fund balance from years past, and in twenty nineteen, our fund balance did go up over five hundred thousand dollars. And if we were to use that six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of our fund balance at the year, at end of the year twenty twenty-one, our fund balance would still be forty-nine percent of our revenue and or forty-seven percent of expenses, which is within our fund balance guidelines. At this point now, we're kind of, we're over that, which is like fifty percent. So we're at this point, we are over that. We are, kept a levy at three percent, which is about the average for the last sixty years in inflation. And that three percent, as we all know, in a levy does not mean that the taxpayers, taxes will go up three percent. It's dependent on property that's came into the mix, um, improvements into the property in that mix. So a three percent increase does not mean a three percent on your property taxes.
So, Mr. President, if I may, so I guess.
Thank you.
I just want to add onto that. So I guess one of the main things, uh, we're hoping to get from the council tonight is, um, what is a levy number that is palatable to the council as a whole?
I think you have to look at, I think you sent it out right away, right? Negative one point seven five with the loss of LGA. I mean, so we really have to look at, do we want a normal five percent or are we already looking at three point two five or three percent?
Mr. President, we, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Is your microphone on?
There you go. I should probably turn it on, huh?
Thank you.
Normally, right now, we have what, one point seven five with the LGA cut. So I mean, we're already in the hole. So I mean, normally we would look at, uh, directive from the mayor would say nothing more than five percent, which has been kind of what we've been doing. Um, so really we're looking at, you know, three and a quarter. And there's, that's going to have to make up a lot of ground there to get to that point, I think. Um, so I think that's, that one point seven five is really going to hurt us. Um, so I don't know if we're going to be able to do the normal. Uh, that's just my, my belief. Um, I know we're at that zero COLA, but I know how we look at those things and how those things kind of meander down the road and we go back and forth with the unions. Um, I think that's going to have to be a discussion and we're going to have to have a really long and hard discussions with them. Um, you know, if you look at the cost of living, you know, if you look at it now, I think we said, was it what, point seven it's been right now through June or July?
Through July, it's, it's a point seven from last year.
Yep. So I think, uh, we're going to have to really look hard at where we truly want to be. Um, I think it's going to be a lot of, uh, discussions that department heads, uh, discussions of what we're going to do with our unions with all, you know, I think we're going to start looking at those, what, this next month here, David? So I mean.
Yes, yep. Now that we have that info, I, um, we'll be sending out the notices to negotiate. Uh, and we did have our first internal personnel meeting, um, regarding that today.
And I'm, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, you should finish.
And I know that, you know, we've already figured out that we're going to lose that LGA. We know that. I know we're at, you know, as you say on your negatives, what, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand was it? Six eighty-eight?
Six thirty-eight, seven twenty-eight.
So I mean, have we been here before? Yes. Can we get down to a acceptable level? I think we can, but I think it's going to take some work again. Um, again, I'll stress that I don't want our reserves to be dipping down. I think we worked hard at that to keep that there. Uh, and I'll go back into the CARES Act money discussion again. I want to make sure that we're not passing any costs that we could have took care of that CARES money, uh, with that cost onto the citizens because they don't need to be paying for that. So I think we need to be cognizant of that. Mayor, go ahead. Mayor, go ahead.
Refresh my memory, Carla and David, last year in our budget effort, we projected a negative 182, 227, and we did that very intentionally. We carried over some surplus and we said, you know what, we should pass a portion of that on as savings to our taxpayers, and so we did that. We actually budgeted a loss of close to $200,000, and yet, it looks like there'll be a carryover. Do we have that number yet? What the carryover may be from 2020? Do we have a rough number of that? It's a positive, right?
Well, it's difficult to look at that. Our revenues are down, especially with Park and Rack, but so are our expenses. But I look just at travel, and in the general fund, we budgeted $77,000 for travel, and we have $68,000 left to spend. So, you know, I don't know what travel people can or will be doing before the end of the year, but there's just, there's a balance just in the travel of those accounts of $68,000.
So we don't know yet. Go ahead, I'm sorry, David.
And I guess the other area too is we, some of our personnel costs are down compared to what they were projected due to that our overtime is down. We have, this particular year so far, we've used significantly less overtime than we have in previous years in a couple of different departments. Whether that continues or not, we don't know. The one unknown is the police department with some of the staffing turnover we've had there. It's down from previous years, but, you know, we don't know what the rest of the year will continue. So if the trend continues, we will have some savings in personnel costs, particularly overtime, but.
So my point with all of that is, I know we don't want to get too crazy anticipating saving money and having higher revenues, but year after year after year, revenues come in very well and expenses, you guys do such a good job. We don't have a single department that feels like I got to spend to my budget or I'll lose it. If you can efficiently run your department out of savings at the end of the year, you're happy to leave that as a surplus back to the taxpayers. I like the culture around here like that. And one final thought, this is awkward for me, but the number that you've plugged in at 3% change year on year from 20 to 21, really could be a 5, you know, as a starting point, and that's what we've done in the past. And again, because that number represents total dollars collected and includes a growth factor, and it's historically been, if we put that in that range of 5, we're keeping the increase in tax to our residents at or about the rate of inflation. And so for my two cents even as we start this conversation, that could be at a 5, and I know with a good track record, we're keeping our increase to about the rate of inflation to our taxpayers. Thank you.
Mr. Grassel.
Refresh my memory on negotiations with our groups. Did we just go one year? I thought we had two-year contracts.
We had three-year contracts, but we did, when we started it, the three years ago, we still had the, we knew that the wage survey, wage study was going to be coming up, so we had a re-opener once we got that back. So our, the contracts with all of our unions expire December 31st of this year.
That's a fast three years then.
Anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
Mr. Riappel, do you have something? Ms. Jones, Mr. Better. Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, President. I just want to make sure I heard the mayor correctly, so do you want me to put 5% in to see where we get with that number? Is that correct?
Yes, and again, for the reason that we say year after year after, it's quite a review for us, but to anyone watching or listening or who might pick it up in the media, the goal is to keep the average change in tax for the average resident as close to the rate of inflation as we can. And for the reason also that President Olsted has said in the past, if we have somewhat artificially kept those tax increases low, artificially low, and depleted our reserves, then you got to pay the piper on the back end, and we're just not going to do that. And so if we can at least kind of keep pace with inflation, keep running as efficiently as we are, I feel that's a responsible way to do it, and it will prevent those kind of 20 and 30% annual increases that nobody likes to see. This way, we just idle along and I think the city runs again very, very efficiently. There's always a little bit of a need there, but that's okay because that's how you find some savings here and there. So yes, I would say, hoping to see each individual family see about an inflationary increase, if that total gross increase was around 5, that would be a good place to be.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add at this time? I see none. Thank you, Carla. Thank David.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to adjourn? Move. Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Riappel. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.